This is a meeting of the Historic Preservation Board of the Village of Pittsburgh. I'm Lisa Klobb, I'm the chair. Today's date is Tuesday, October 19th. This meeting was moved from our traditional second Monday of the month because of the holiday. So I just want to open this meeting. Do I have to second to open the meeting?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Does anybody here need to recuse themselves for any application that's being presented to you tonight for any reason?
No.
No. No. So we will...
Did you just call him? Are you just calling Steve?
Ken.
Yeah, we just called Mr. Syracuse.
Oh.
Were you just calling Mr. Syracuse? Yes.
Okay, so the 31 North Main Street door applicant is not here, correct? No, it's Ken. Okay, so we're moving to number two, 18 East Beutel Terrace. So we have the applicant here. Eighteen East...
Eighteen East...
Okay.
Is that...
David.
All right.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yep.
Hi, David.
I'm David, I'm here with my wife Tara Augustin.
Okay, and baby.
And baby.
I think the internet cut out.
There or here?
I have no idea.
Do you want to try calling in with your phone?
Okay, great.
Do you want to try calling in with your phone?
Yeah, hi, sorry. I think the connection was lost. I'm not getting a video feed right now.
Video is down for the moment, I'm working on getting it back up.
Okay.
Marina, you don't have any extra copies by any chance?
Of the whole package?
Yes. Well, that's all right, I could share. David, can you hear us?
I can.
Okay, so we can hear you, everything okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so you are presenting tonight a door in replacement of a window on your garage, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. I was there on site today, I wonder if you saw me and my dog.
No.
Took a look at the property myself, and it is quite difficult to see that door from the street. I mean, I know that the trees have leaves on them right now, and it might be different in the winter. But obviously Steve made a decision that this is something that can be viewed from public way. So the door that you want to put on, is that just for access to the garage? Is that the only door to access the garage?
Well, so we have, you know, large garage doors that face Jefferson Ave., but no other doors other than that to access the garage, that's correct.
Okay. Is there any other reason why you want to put those on? Just for access?
No, just so we could access the garage more easily. Those front garage doors operate on the electrical system, so if the electric ever went down, we wouldn't be able to get in or out.
Which happened to me just a month ago. When we had that...
Yeah.
Yeah, I was stuck, yeah. Okay. Ken, did you take a look at the application? Do you have any thoughts on that? Here's the new, this is kind of the new drawing here. That there's a window here and they want a door.
Does that face, does the door face Jefferson?
No, it faces the back of this house.
Okay.
So... If I could show you. So there's the garage facing Jefferson. The door is on the side right there, and then their house is here. So it kind of faces the yard in between the house and the garage.
The application states that the door faces East Beutel Terrace.
Right, which is, right. Door is East Beutel Terrace, but the house is there, and then East Beutel Terrace. So the door faces, the house faces East Beutel Terrace. Does that make sense?
And the garage doors face East Beutel?
No, the garage doors face Jefferson.
Okay.
You got it?
Yeah.
Fairly visible, but it is visible from sidewalk.
So it's really facing the back of the house?
Yes. Okay. Any questions or comments? The door is, we have materials for the door, which is all wood?
No, no, I don't believe it's correct.
No.
It's a fiberglass door.
Fiberglass door, so we have materials in our packet. From wood.
Yes.
I did see that.
You asked generally if people have comments, or are you going to ask each of us individually?
I'll ask each individual.
Right.
So we do have the materials of the door in our packet. Let me find them, I don't remember seeing that. I saw a picture, but I didn't see the materials.
Right up.
On page 26, it says, at the very bottom, material is called last statements fiberglass door. Page 26.
Got it. Okay, here's it goes, okay. Wood grain, brick mold framed fiberglass door with windows, correct?
Yeah.
And David, the drawing that you've given us, that's exactly the window configuration that you're using?
Yeah, yeah, it would be half light configuration. I'm forgetting exactly what it looks like, but it's something like six panes at the top, or nine panes?
And then it has the two decorative panels on the bottom.
Correct. And just to clarify, it's a wood look door, it's not wood grain?
Wait, it's a full kind of?
Yeah.
Jeff, do you have any questions or comments for the applicant?
It seems to be pretty much out of sight, that's the understanding of this. I wasn't able to get by and look at it, but can't be seen from the house. That's just the question I had, and then whether or not this window opening, which obviously is advantageous for light in that garage, matches what you see in the house, but I take it this is a much newer structure though.
The garage? I don't know if the garage is original with the house or not.
What does the blue form say?
It does match the windows in the house.
Oh my gosh, I didn't, let's just see that, ran to go over the house.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can't remember where it was. It doesn't say whether or not the garage...
Oh, no.
Oh, yes, it's showing at least in 1975, the garage was in place. Although the blue form doesn't say that it was original. Second to figure it out.
So Jeff, do you have any other questions for the applicant?
Yeah.
Okay, Jenny?
I know, I'm sorry, I have to look into what your name is.
David.
David, when you say what, you said the wood grain is a wood look. Typically, when a door, a window, or siding says wood grain, that means if you felt it, it would have a texture that approximates wood, but only wood in a very deteriorated state. Ordinarily, if wood is in good condition and it's painted, it's smooth. So in my opinion, wood grain or the texture is, when you can feel the texture, I don't know how else to frame that. My opinion that that's inappropriate. You don't want to have a door, it's inappropriate to have a door, a window, or anything else that appears like deteriorated wood.
Right.
I think that the door should be smooth rather than brick mold. Brick mold is a trim that's used in masonry buildings. And if you look on page, I believe it's 26, no?
27?
No.
You can't really see it there.
I'm looking at the, I'm looking, oh, here, 22. The window has appropriately sized trim with a cap on the window. It's my opinion that the appropriate trim is the same dimension as wood trim, of the same dimension as the window, and I assume it's the same as the trim on the house with a drip cap at the top.
So you're recommending that they do that trim and a solid non-foe?
You're asking for my opinion on the application, and my opinion is that the door should be smooth, not wood grain, and that the trim should match exactly
The width.
The width, the dimensions of both thickness and width along with the drip cap of the existing window and those openings on the house.
Yeah, this does not indicate any trim.
Right.
No, it's, well...
It's just sort of self.
Brick mold is a very thin little trim, and that's...
Right, that's why...
He's not, I don't believe he's showing that.
Yeah.
Because it's somewhat wider than what you would see, but just...
So David, do you understand what Jenny's asking?
I do, and if I could just clarify, so Steve and I went back and forth a couple of times with the application, and on the latest application, I didn't use the word wood grain, I used the word wood look. So the door we're proposing does not have a faux wood grain texture. It would be smooth, just as the board member was describing. The point about the trim is well taken, I understand that. It sounds like if we were to do this, the trim would have to appear similar to how it is right now with the existing window. Is that correct?
Only if that's what the board approves.
Yes.
They're trying to remove the brick mold and put one mic before on that.
Okay. So why did you call it wood look?
Oh, that's just how the door is described on the website we're looking at. Wood look insofar as that, you know, as the board member was describing when it's painted, it has kind of a smooth texture as a wood door might feel and appear when painted.
The door is made, the material is...
It's fiberglass.
The material is fiberglass, so if you, he can't say it's wood
Right.
because it's fiberglass.
Okay.
So he has to say wood look.
Most fiberglass doors don't have a wood grain, they think they're wood looking because it's a panel door.
So more traditional, like a traditional wood look, okay.
I never seen a fiberglass door that has wood in it.
Okay. So just to clarify this, David, so we're asking to have this door a smooth finish, and you're painting it?
It's going to be purchased, painted already.
And then you're willing to frame it out exactly the way the rest of the windows on that building are framed out?
Trimmed.
Are trimmed out?
Got it.
Is that...
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So then we can make that adjustments when we make a motion. Jenny, what do you think?
That's fine with me.
Okay, you want to make a motion?
Sure.
All right.
At the meeting of the HPP on October, it is the 19th.
Yes.
2021, the following motion was made. I make a motion to approve the following conditions. The application for replacing the existing window with a door at the property located at 18 East Beutel Terrace. The conditions are that the door will be smooth, the finish of the door will be smooth, no textured appearance, and that the trim on the door will match the existing trim on the window to be removed, and that on the house, which is what appears to be approximately one by four sides and head with a drip cap at the top. The drip cap can certainly be removed and reinstalled with you as well, well, it's not going to be wide enough, with a drip cap at the top.
I second.
Member Paul?
Aye.
Member Sarah?
Aye.
Jefferson Cole?
Yes.
Member Moll?
Yes.
Well, she carries.
Okay, great, David.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time, appreciate it.
Make sure you see me for a permit day before I close in.
Okay, will do, thank you.
I'd like to add the following findings to the staff, Marianne. The application is with conditions noted, is in compliance with the village ordinance as well as the design guidelines, and presents no negative impact to the historic resource.
Thank you, Jenny. It looks like Mr. Syracuse is here.
Danny, I'm so sorry, yes.
That's okay, come on up.
I'm here.
Yay.
Okay.
Thank you.
How are you?
Awesome.
Good, good, have a seat.
I'll stay back here because I don't feel honored.
Okay, oh, okay.
Maybe, I think it's...
You could have called in, but, all right, so you are here now the third time, is that right? Neither, okay. Well, you're here more than once, let's say that. Okay, so according to our minutes last meeting, we had talked about the fact that you were going to remove the door and take out that one side light, and then we had requested, or we suggested that you kind of put some kind of decorative panels on the side so that it would, you know, make the door look appropriate for...
That was actually an approval.
It was approved.
It was approved, right.
Yeah, that's true, and then I went and got prices for it, and there was some contact with Steve, with Wally Morse, Morse Lambert, and after construction, we missed Morse. We sent an amended request perhaps to try to meet our needs here in the village and not just spend a ridiculous amount of money. Two people, one of us, to pay, which was close to $7,000. As reminded, respectfully, what happened in this instance was there was someone who worked on our yard, they threw a rock through, it was a screen door, it was a window, they wanted to try to get that replaced, and they said your door is rotted and it was a wrong motion, so I appreciate that. And someone came and fixed the door. So I had no intention of fixing the first door until we said, you can't fix the door, you need a new door. So, and then we came at one night and we had encountered, and I'm just trying to get the door so everyone's okay.
I get it.
The matter is in the fourth judge in Sullivan, Pittsburgh, in court. I'll come up in a couple of weeks. I don't have an admission when the case was thrown in court. I can submit, you know, that's, I think that's it, that's what Mr. Morse recommended, and thought that would be appropriate. Because it would, quite frankly, if I may...
Yeah.
It would, that is, but for the color of the door, that would be the same, very similar to the door, which was, we painted blue, it was probably our natural, because we bought it in May or March. That was another door that was rotted when it changed, so hopefully, that should be about $1,000, a $1,400 fix, which is most more palatable than the $6,400 or $6,600. So that's going to look just like the other door that was there. Maybe it's a little bit bigger, a little bit smaller, because we need to do some work on it. That's what Morse suggested, based upon that suggestion, the reconversation I had with Steve. We submitted the additional papers, and hopefully we get that approved and get that done.
Could I ask you, this is the photograph we have from your original?
No, that's the one they were proposing right now.
No, 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 no. This is what was there.
No.
Is that a blue door?
No.
No.
No, that's what they're proposing.
So this is, no, this is what's there now.
That's correct.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, and that's what they're proposing.
And this was a replacement door for the blue door, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, well, no, no, I'm so sorry. If you go back to that first page, Mr. Morse, that's what we put in to replace the blue door. That, I believe, is the rendering that Mr. Morse suggested that would appear.
Yes, that's what they're proposing right now.
That's, that's...
So we asked for a single door, we approved a single door.
Well, we approved a single door
Right.
with a surround.
Yes. And he's coming back and says the surround is too much money, and he wants to do that.
Which I believe accommodates no side light, which I never, what those words, like, can you forget a couple of years?
This is what's in place right now.
Right.
This is what's in place right now, correct?
Right, that was a replacement that was not appropriate.
That was not appropriate.
So does anybody want to speak at all first, before I go down the line? I mean, I... So this is very different, obviously, than what we had suggested you do. And different meaning that for a front door in a village, we asked for some decoration, because that's what is classic for a front door in a village house. Doesn't have to be elaborate, but to me, this looks like you took a couple pieces of plywood and painted them.
Okay.
So that's my thought.
I'm sure, starting with the door that was on there before?
The door looks great, I'm talking about the side.
The other door, the blue door.
Yeah.
And no decorations, because that was a store, it was a blue door, and so that...
Right, because you were filling the opening, right, but now you're filling an opening with plywood.
You could do something else, I suppose, I don't know.
Yeah.
But I'm not, because I don't have the mandate to spend $6,000. So we can talk to Mr. Morse. I don't know, because that door, I don't know what was there before, I don't recall. I don't think there was any sidelines. I am certain that after our house was hit back in like a week...
You don't have any pictures of the door when, before you took it out?
I think there was one on the side that, I think there was one...
Because I, you know, you've got an old one that when I...
If you show me, I can tell.
Well, when the structure was, you know, oh, it's hard to see because it's...
Yeah, we took all that out.
Yeah, so I don't know, we can't see...
It was just, yeah, no, it was just a...
I know, what's the matter with this? What do we do?
Like what?
What's the matter with this? You want to remove?
No, because we...
No, I like that door, but you said no.
No, no, we voted that down because it was a one side light, and we wanted them to do the two side lights, which would have been appropriate for that building. So that...
Well, there's zero or two side lights on this floor. I think the first one, I knew it was...
Right, zero, right, zero or two, right. Couldn't do the one sided like that. So that was voted down by the last year.
Any chance you can revisit Mr. Morse, when she was on the first order, when it's on or not?
No, no, she was just wondering why that was...
So because it's one side light, I mean, zero or two.
Yeah. So going back, so do you, I'm going to, I would like to ask you, would you feel comfortable going back to your door guy and see if he can do something a little bit in between? From the flatness to the decorative, like what we suggested last time?
Excuse me, asking Wally Morse to, I know Wally, he's a friend of mine.
You see, I know Wally.
And he's a, he's a nice guy, lives in the village, he appreciates historic homes. But Wally is not on this board, and...
But Wally works for him, he's working, he's consulting with him.
I understand that, but the applicant has already received input from us about what's acceptable. So then going to Wally and asking Wally what's appropriate?
No, no, what had happened, I think you missed that. So he showed this to Wally, and Wally says that he could do this, but it's going to be $6,000.
Well, there was another, so there was two other people. It's going to be $6,400 and change.
So you didn't ask Wally what he could do for this?
I asked Wally what would be, I didn't get a price on that, but Wally didn't seem to, when I told him that, he didn't seem to think that was not, that he wouldn't be able to beat that much, because you were asking for a lot for that one door. So I asked Wally, are there other ways to accommodate the need for no sidelines? Because that's going to be what we do. And he said yes, and that's what he said would be a rendition, which was no sideline. If he wanted it to, I don't know, maybe we could stain it brown?
That's not going to help, is it?
Stay, no, I'm sorry, the two white parts? Okay. Do you want it solid?
No, so I mean, if you look at what our recommendation was before, you can see that that is what a main entrance on homes looks like. Right, so that's what we asked for, and what you came back with was, you know, like I said, it looks like plywood alongside that door. So it's just flat and it's not decorative. So we asked specifically for decorative. So what I'm asking is, do you, I mean, we could certainly vote on what you're sending us, that, the flat panels, we can vote on that, if you feel comfortable with us doing that. Or you can go back with this diagram that was a suggestion, doesn't have to be exact.
No, sir, that was approved, Mr. Syracuse approved.
Based on this? This is the exact thing. So you got this from Barrow, right? Barrow Associates, and this is exactly what we approved. So...
Well, that was, that I learned what we're going to do. All will be...
Okay.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Jeff, is, would it be more appropriate for the applicant to go to the trustees with a financial hardship?
It comes to us with a financial hardship.
Okay, not yet. I think we got a lot of room for that, Jenny, that's a big endeavor.
Well, it's not going to be any... I don't know what definition hardship is. I'm unwilling to spend it. If you wanted to talk about splitting it 50/50, I would be happy to consider that. But then the idea of spending on a building that's worth about $225,000 or $300,000, spending $6,000, $8,000 on a front door, really...
Right, so you're unwilling to spend that money, we understand that. But there's a big difference between a thousand and six, obviously, right? So there's some room that's going to make it more pliable for you. So I, my suggestion...
Would you be willing to meet with Wally and tell us what you like?
Well, we kind of told you what we like right here.
Yeah, I want, well...
And maybe, maybe talking with Wally and see what he says about this. And maybe he's got some ideas that are very similar to this, that he can do it for less money?
Maybe fluidity, I don't know.
I don't know.
Wally, you said the session door, he does, he would not build the surround. That's a separate contract to support.
Okay, so...
So if the discussion is about whether or not he does the surround, the surround would in fact cover that gap, which is what we...
Exactly.
Why this was submitted and why it was approved. But the surround is not Wally Morse's work.
So then you need to find somebody who does the surround, right? Jenny, you're saying that's just...
I was not impressed.
So you had two people that had looked at this or to build it, do you remember who they were? Do you remember what...
I was a little bit frustrated with Steve.
Okay.
So I mean, I'd be happy to spend $2,500, but I...
So it looks like you need to take this drawing and talk to a couple people and get something that you feel more comfortable with that's closer to this. I mean, we are miles apart from this to what you submitted, I'm on a chart.
You don't think this is a cycle? I, this last one didn't go great, but my obligation, as I understand it is, I'm replacing the door, that one condition that you don't like, with exactly the same...
It's not that we don't like. It doesn't, it's not architecturally appropriate for that building.
Well, it is, because it has no side light.
No, that's not the only way that makes it architecturally appropriate.
Well, it was like that when I bought it, and isn't there a grandfather clause if I replaced the one it was? I mean, that's the way, well, it had no sidelines, it was a front door, so all I did was open the door and shut it.
So can you get another door that is wide in that space? A solid door as wide as that space?
It has, I don't, I don't...
If that's what was there before?
I think the door that I had now is wider than the one we have.
So then you built out, you took it, made it bigger?
I don't know, I mean, I was going to talk...
So that, so if you were to replace in kind, you would have taken that door out and you left the same exact opening, and you replaced it exactly with a door, yes. But that's not what had happened, you took it out, you made it bigger to accommodate that side lights, and now we're in a whole different world. So now we've got to figure out what's appropriate architecturally for that building to fill that space. So, yeah, we want, I mean, we want to work with you, trust me, but we've just got to figure out...
I don't like to guess, so if somebody could tell them, you know, what's the bare minimum that they will be satisfied with, then I'll give a price on that. It doesn't really make up, because respectfully, I have no interest in a $7,000 front door for that, so please don't.
Yeah.
So if somebody's... So if somebody's just.
It's not, it's not our job to design.
Right, so, so, so this is, this is a really, this is, and again, I think that there's some room to play here, but there, but what you submitted was there was no play. It was bland, like I said, it looked like plywood, so there's a big difference here, I think if you take this drawing and talk to some people that do this work to surround this door, it's gonna be somebody other than Wally, and I'm sure he knows people that can refer you to, and see, see what you come up with. Is that okay?
We have a court coming up. Should know, the judge has been dismissed. It's gonna be dismissed, compliant with the.
Wait, wait, I'm, I'm, I'm confused, what are we talking about here?
Somebody, that may, may, may already will be, but that isn't relevant to this point, but.
Yeah, I don't know what's.
But I guess the point is if it gets dismissed, then it's probably fine. Right?
Well, let's.
I mean, I'm not, I'm not, Steve, I'm not.
I'm, I'm lost.
Sorry.
Okay.
You, you, you have your jurisdiction, you're doing.
Yeah, so somebody tells us that we don't need to do this, I guess we won't, but right now, this is where we are. So, yeah, so to take this, see what, see what comes up, you know, you're more than welcome to give Steve a call, you know, see if you're on the right track, but this is.
Steven, I'll need to tell him what might be appropriate.
This is what might be appropriate, but there's some play here, I mean, it doesn't have to be exact, but it has to be, if you're, you're gonna come back, you're gonna have to make another drawing if it's not exactly like that.
That's if you know the fifty dollars you can change right there.
Well, we can leave this open, right, we can leave this open, or we can vote on it, and then if we vote on it and it's refused, then we'll have to, but we can leave it open.
Let's, let's, let's leave it.
Okay, we'll leave it open. So we'll leave it open, we'll give you a chance, you know, take this back with you.
Turns out two, two, what happens?
That's a good question, we have an alternate, Jenny, yeah.
Excuse me.
Yes.
It's my opinion that Steve is not the correct person for the applicant to be discussing what's appropriate for the.
No, no, I didn't say, I didn't say he was gonna make a decision about what they, but he's gonna help him with the process so that he comes back, just like he does with everyone.
He can help with the process, but I, I understood the applicant to state that he would be asking Steve for input on what might be acceptable.
That's what I'm gonna ask him, yeah.
Well, but, but Steve is.
Not a board member.
I understand it, he has experience, right, he's a building instructor, he would know what's good and what's bad.
Well, he can help you through the process, but again, the vote ends with us, so.
From a functional standpoint, he probably could, but he's, he's not a board member.
I appreciate that, but nobody's willing to tell me what to do, other than if you don't do the seven thousand dollar one, it's not gonna pass.
No.
But you said there's some play, I just don't know the definition of play is.
I, I agree.
I don't know what it is, if I was to.
But somebody who does this work will know, they'll know what play is. And if you show them what you showed me, and you showed them this, they would be like, there is a big, huge difference between what this is and what you brought. So, work with that and we'll leave it open, okay? And we will make progress next time.
Do you think someone might do the job for us, you know, two people told me that similar figures, it's more, even though somebody can, I love it all, but that, that's, with one, it seems like a little bit decorative for the building, that's just too much money, so we, I'm happy to try, at least doesn't need the boards across, but I think there's a reasonable thing, the way the fact that it's an office alternative, and not, not the least of which is the history of the building, it'll be approved what you made it with, because on the board, it wasn't a lot, so.
Right, we appreciate that, we appreciate that. Okay, so let's do that, okay, you want to take this with you, you got a copy?
I'm gonna take that one.
Take that with you and.
Do I even want to take that one? Or if you could take it out a little bit, it's gonna be a problem.
Uh, well, it's gonna, if you have yourself together and you've got another rendition for next month, we'll just do it the first Monday of the next meeting month, in, uh, November. It's gonna be the second Monday of November.
Which is, which is.
Okay, all right, thank you so much.
Good to see you.
All right, you have a great day, thank you. Okay, so let's move on to our sign at One North Main Street. Hi, Mona, yeah, Mona. How are you? I'm great, so you're new to the branch shop that's coming in, we're so excited.
Thank you, I'm happy to.
Welcome, yes. Awesome, well, I, I'm, I'm just looking forward to the beautiful windows, so, right, okay.
I'm growing in tonight.
I know, um, so I did have a question in regards to your signage, so the signage that was there before, for, and was, and was one law, I said that.
Brass and one.
And brass and one, you're putting it in the same location, or is there, okay, and is this, are these letters mounted on a backboard?
Yes.
Okay, so my question is, the one that's in the front, it looks like you're spanning from the side of the building all the way across the door of your place, is that correct?
No.
All right, well, let me show you.
Stops at the.
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
Stops at the door. That's the door, that's the entrance way.
No, no, I'm sorry, hold on, yes, across is their door, so right there, take a look at this, so you're asking for it to go from there, all the way to there, right? Is that correct?
It's, it shouldn't be the same dimension.
She's just showing.
No, it's just a dimension, there's a picture of the front right there.
Yep. Got it, all right, well, I'm just saying, so that's.
Gave you the linear footage of the whole frontage of the building.
Oh, all right, well, that's, okay. Well, that makes it easy. All right, so that makes sense. Okay, that, that, that was my concern.
Does the board, if, that the letters are mounted on, will it be the same color as the cornice board there?
White.
Yes.
Same, same color as, as the background that it's placed on?
Yeah.
And it's the, the letter that are applied, it's the most environmentally friendly product that is out in the market right now.
So can I ask you why you put the, what, the letters right on the building, why you wanted to put them on board?
Uh, we just thought that it actually improved a little bit more of which.
Dimension, like.
A little more dimension, a little bit more top and a little bit more.
Okay.
Uh, exterior lighting is already, um, in place.
Yes.
So it's just gonna have a little.
Okay.
Okay, well, I, I would guess that, uh, considering the health of the building, if you will.
Yes.
That having.
A base for.
Having a, a, a plate, I'm gonna call it, the sign board, whether it's ward or whatever, um.
It's gonna be better for.
We'll have fewer fasteners, and if the letters were applied directly to the cornice, um, whether it's adhesive or screws or some sort of fastener.
Okay.
It's probably better for the building to be on a board.
I agree.
All right, Ken, do you have any questions for the applicant? Um, I, I saw that you guys had put some, um, appliques up on the windows.
Tempers.
Oh, those are tempers, yeah.
Good question, I saw that.
Yes, I double checked to see about that.
Okay, great, all right, I have no questions either.
No questions.
So does somebody want to make a motion?
Someone besides me likes to make a motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion.
One exception, everyone has to come tomorrow to use our grade notice.
Oh, it is tomorrow evening?
Tomorrow evening.
Oh, I'm gonna come, I'm coming, I'm gonna write that down right now. All right. Okay, you wanna make a motion?
Okay, I make a motion at the, uh, meeting of the HBB on October nineteenth, uh, two thousand twenty one, at, uh, regarding the signage on, we have One North Main Street. Uh, we approved this submitted.
I second.
Remember Ma?
Yes.
Remember Sarah?
Yes.
Remember Paula?
Yes.
Interference tolls.
Yes. Great, congratulations, I'll see you tomorrow.
You're welcome.
Thank you, my, my, I'm finding the fact.
Thank you for sharing.
Yes, sir, okay.
The application is in keeping with, uh, the, the ordinance and, and the, uh, design standards and presents no negative impact to the resource.
Thanks, Jenny, that always counted in those steps in my days, thank you. It's important, and I know, and you do it really well, and I, I agree, I agree.
Somebody just said you need to say.
I know.
Well, because everybody on the board needs to.
Yeah.
Punch those steps in my head, okay.
Buy into it.
We buy into it.
Yeah.
Um, forty five showing place, Shane Place, that's, it's called Shane Place, do you guys know that? Shane Place, I know, everyone says it wrong, including me.
I know, we say it wrong, too.
Mona, how are you? Hi, again, good to see you, again, welcome, we're so excited to have your business, it's amazing, you've done a beautiful job on that building, it's, it's really amazing.
About time.
Yeah, that building is, is gonna be so happy to see some action there finally. I know you are, so thank you.
I just wanted to let you guys know that Tony Smalls, this year from God Science.
Okay.
He's the one that helps me engineer it.
Awesome, okay, all right. All right.
I want to let you know that her lengthy debate and discussion that all variants were granted to Meran last night, that be the beer.
Yes, so I, uh, so this, this application went in front of the planning and zoning board last night, Justin and I talked today about what had happened last night. Um, just to help you understand, we are two very separate, independent boards. We, um, make our own decisions and we make them based on our own kind of guidelines and, and policies and procedures that are written that we follow. So what zoning and planning does is they look at it from a very different perspective, and we look at it from more of an architectural detail perspective. So Justin gave me, um, an easy, and I gotta remember how he said why they approved your, uh, variants. He says that he, that after, I guess, sixty minutes or ninety minutes, he said there was a lot of deliberation, right? Yeah, he said it was a long deliberation, but he had, they come to a conclusion that the, um, the benefit to your business outweighed the detriment to the community. That's, that's what he put, so that, that's their perspective. Now, if I had to use where we come from, we would say, um, is the detriment to your business going to impact the architectural detail visually of that building? So that's kind of where we're coming from, okay? I, I know you. Okay, yeah, so, so I, I'm gonna go first because I've spoke to you and, um, I've done a lot, I, you know, I've, I've always loved this building, my fourteen year old scooped ice cream in this building for a long time, um, this building is really a treasure, and it's walked by numerous times a day, and people look at it. I, I do love their little hanging, little hanging little signs, and, um, I do appreciate the fact that you showed us some other buildings that do those little hanging signs, um, but if you also look at some of the other buildings as well, besides this one right here, um, a lot of the signage is, like I had talked to you about, um, that, what do you call it, Jenny, not to stop it, but what's the?
It's the eave.
The eave, the eave, okay.
Yes.
Um, and I went again today, measured your space on that eave, just to see if it's feasible to, to do something there, just in case. I also looked at many of the other areas around your building, and there is no other sign that's mounted, uh, the way you're mounting this sign on your, your roof. What bothers me about this is, is the way your roof slants towards the canal, it's a nice clean line, you've got your little dormers there, and to me, it interrupts the line of the, of the roof. Um, it looks like you plopped a wooden sign on the roof, which is what you're doing, so I, I'm a bit bothered by that, I, I would like to see it more encompassing with the architectural detail of the building, like so many of the other buildings are. Um, spacing is an issue, and I didn't have a chance to take a look at how big of a text you need for the distance that you're trying to, you know, advertise to your community, so I don't have that worked out, but I know that there is a, a formula to say how big your text has to be for a distance of a certain, and I think your, your place is thirty feet from the canal sidewalk. Um, so, I don't mind the little hanging signs, but that sign, I'm, I'm just not comfortable with, so that's just me, so we've got other people here, yes.
I just want to comment, the notion down below is mounted exactly the same.
Yes, and I was there, but the notion has no other option, there is nothing there, and, and the notion is a flat roof. This roof significant, like half of the building is the roof, if you look at the building, the building and the roof are almost equal in size. The notion is a flat roof, and they have nothing else to put, they have got no other space to put it on, so, very different. No, I looked, I walked all the way back there, I looked at everything, I took pictures, and I saw the notion sign, and like I said, that roof is quite flat, and there is.
So, it's sort of like a big, you're saying pitch.
Oh, oh, gosh, yeah, it's very, I mean, you can barely see that it even pops up.
Which, which building is the notion?
The one where the, uh, alterations guy is.
And ocean.
On the bad side of this.
The roof that mounted to the roof, and then just still framed from the old.
Yeah. Yeah.
The whole face, roof mounted with.
Yeah, next to the pisser lumber on that, that edge down there.
Like the, that's showing up or down?
Yeah, I can show you, excellent.
It's that robot building that's backed up to the barn there.
So I've said my vet, so I'm gonna open it up to anybody else who wants to start, um, your thoughts and.
I do, I do not share your concerns, uh, about the visual aspects of this sign. What does concern me is, uh, anytime you put fasteners through a roof, you're making a hole in the roof, you never want to make a hole in the roof. That's a consideration of, of the potential damage to the roof of, of the building is, is my only, is my concern.
Well, I'll try to speak to this.
Use neoprene water.
Sound like dishes are running on, use all the time, and antennas and things like that, it's, it's a pretty light made crack, and we take great care.
What, what size, what size fasteners do you use, and what do you use to prevent, uh,
We use roof prop.
Moisture from.
We seal before we drill a hole, so it would be, uh, put a bead around the bottom of the plate and through the, under the washer that has the.
Do you, do you use, do you use a neoprene washer?
Using the.
Do you use neoprene washers? With the doors?
That's, that's the, uh, you by.
Just a little pushing. And another, this kind of, this is like one of the, one of the, planning, but this is also, and it's, it's no permission.
No, no, no.
Um, this year, it's on the, on thing, and we discussed that later.
These signs hang lower.
The good thing about this.
Well, I agree, but if moisture gets in there, rock starts, it's, it's, it's.
These signs are hiding that section.
Now, regarding those other, like the notion, or whatever sign is down there on the mountain, and we, we could consider that, but here I am saying the landlord might be putting gutters across the front there, because it's a long speed roof, would run off, and it's a public dining area, so when it's raining, you know, people go out.
Right.
They're lost down.
Right, you need, you should have.
Put a gutter down, then, then you really have to project that sign on, and then it really gets funky and, and.
So this is what I was, if you want to see, so this is what I was, this is really traditionally what most businesses do with their signage, they run it across that, that, so it's not.
Yeah, but that's eight inches high, and the eaves out front here hides, so you've got like a four inch.
No, I, 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 no, it's actually, it turns out to be nine, you got a nine inch band.
Well, there's two pieces of trim board up there.
No, this is after the trim board, I, I was there today, I measured it out, yeah, so I'm just, you know, I'm just saying, this is just what my thought was, and if you used a nine inch letter, like if you took up that whole letter on that, I think.
And that's where the gutter would be mounted.
Well, the gutter's not there now, though, right?
No.
It doesn't look like it.
Well, the question is, but the question is, are we able to put gutters up?
Why would you not be able to put?
Well, because there's no gutters there now, right?
I don't believe gutters are.
Yes, they are, because I had to put, all my gutters in my house had to come through preservation, so that.
Changing the material?
Yes. Yeah.
That's why, that's why you're speaking.
Yeah, but you put a new gutter on a place, yeah, so it's gonna have to come through, so. Yeah, so, so we don't even, right, so it would have to be approved anyways, even to put a gutter there, um, so.
Justin Belistrat is on and offering to make comments, the board wants to entertain him.
I'm sorry?
Justin Belistrat is on and offering to make comment if the board would like to entertain it.
Okay, well, hold on a minute, because I'm gonna, he's a planning board person, all right, let me just, uh, talk to the rest of my board first, if anybody has any.
Yeah, I, I, when I looked at this, um, and I kind of share a little bit of that feeling about that center sign, but on the other hand, is a sort of a marketing thing, I think it's very important to have that sign there because it ties all these smaller ones, all these other activities together, and shows you what this is, so people know where to go, you'll see that right up there. Uh, the little circular sign is a little odd, but, you know, that, that makes it a little different, but, uh, I also had kids that worked in the, in ice cream shop there, so I know the building well.
Can I ask you, does this, is this picture to scale, is that how big the sign is gonna look, is that true scale?
One other thing I just wanted to let you guys know is, um, my whole background is in branding and advertising, and I brought a few things just to share with you guys about what my logo looks like on other things, this is my gift card. This is my gift cards, I'm doing a vintage candy station, these are my vintage candy things. I'm doing like some little gift bags, so, um, the logo, I put a lot of thought into.
That's the circular, the circular?
Yeah.
Okay, I get it now.
So you're saying you want to keep your brand, you want to keep your logo, brand, it's just the way it is, yeah. I understand that, yeah, I understand that.
So to put the sign below the socket, it would have to be really small, so the people really didn't bang their heads on it. Because the roof.
Right, if you kept it square. Instead of elongating, you wanna keep yours logo square.
Exactly, and I really, you know, I feel very strongly about this design. I think it suits the type of this style of building. I think it sort of has that train depot, um, general store look. This type of signage is very typical of signage from the early nineteen hundreds. I did a lot of research on that and, um, you know, Tony has done a lot of signs in Pittsburgh. And what we work on together is, you know, these wood gold leaf signs.
Yeah, it's actually sandblasted here. So it, it's got, you know, a classic wood traditional look, um, it just enhances everything.
This is the background, it's debossed, it's.
It's sandblasted.
Yeah.
So your green is unpredictable by what it looks like.
Yeah.
Um, just adds character and flair to it. Now, the smaller hanging signs would be smooth, so that just would be like this with the same finish.
Okay.
So, so the signage is, is twofold, it's, it's the main sign and then the little signs that hang underneath. So make sure that we take that into consideration.
Yeah.
Jenny, do you have any other, or I'm sorry, Jeff, are you finished with your thoughts? Okay. Jenny, do you have any thing else you wanna say?
Only that, I, I think that the size of the lettering on the sign is proposed is appropriate for the size of the building. It's, it's proportional to the size of the building. Um, and if that sign was hung, I suspect it would hang down lower than the, uh, village code allowed.
The bottom of that stuff or the eave.
Yeah, you could never, yeah, you couldn't hang it.
So.
Right, you couldn't hang it.
I don't, I don't, in order to put it on, on the eave, the lettering would have to be much smaller.
It would have to be, it would have to be nine inches high. I don't know how.
Yep.
Well, if you have a nine inch band, you can't put a nine inch letter.
You can't put a nine inch letter.
No, it was, it was nine and a half or eight and a half inch.
It's not, I don't believe that the, that the depth of the eave.
Is big enough.
Is big enough to accommodate the size of letter, lettering that's appropriate for the size of the expanse of that elevation, the fifty-foot frontage of that elevation.
That was, that was part of the major discussion last night, we're trying to figure out alternatives. And there isn't a lot of options to make. Windows all have exterior mounting, so there's no signage can go on the window. The doors have exterior mounting, there's no signage on the door. There's no space between the windows or the doors to put anything on the inside front. It'd be inside five feet from the public view.
Okay.
And you can't put monuments on your front, because they're not allowed.
Yeah.
So it has to be accessible.
Okay.
And, you know, you don't wanna cover up one of the dormers, and then it just looks awkward.
Well, that would be an inappropriate location in my opinion.
Okay. All right, so Jenny, do you have any other comments or questions? Okay, Ken, are you comfortable, is everybody comfortable making a vote before? Um, do you feel a need, anybody feel the need to hear Justin's, um, discussion on this?
I don't feel a need, but I'd be interested in what he has to say. But if I'm the only one who's curious, why doesn't need to, we don't have to hear.
Yeah, I guess that's right.
No, Justin was on the phone. Well, do you feel comfortable making the decision?
I do.
Do you feel comfortable making a decision?
Sure, let's hear what Justin.
Before, before?
Yeah.
Okay. Please keep it brief, Justin.
Okay, thank you. Um, first of all, I was really hoping that everyone on the board to get a chance to read a draft of our decisions, because we, um, we had a lot of information in there and we had a lot of conditions of approval. And what I wanted to state is, one of the things when people are asking for relief from the code requirement, um, as you're aware, you're always concerned about precedents and we're looking for a good reason, usually that's unique to, uh, that specific property. So I put a lot of language in there, um, stating restrictions on what future owners can do with signage and so on. And I think that would be worth a read by everybody. But if you're set for a decision, that's fine. Um, but just a couple of things that we had observed, I just wanted to share, obviously you can make your own decisions. Um, but what we thought was the six signs as a group were fine. Uh, we liked the symmetry of the little signs. Um, we had challenge, we didn't really think of any practical alternatives that were legal for, um, the roof mounted signs. Um, they, as was stated, um, monument signs are also illegal by code. But, um, so what we had thought with, uh, if there's future changes to this building, um, how would signage possibly change? And one of the conditions we put in there is that, um, if the small hanging signs, uh, we thought it was important for all five to be there and we didn't want to see a subset of that. We actually thought it would be a worse appearance, um, if there was gonna be, say, two or if they're off-centered or anything like that. So we thought all that was important. Um, so, but the main thing I wanted to get is I was hoping you guys would at least get a chance to read a draft of what we had written up before, um, um, so you understood everything. Um, and, uh, the version that we had last night, I think was good enough for you guys to get the gist of it, so.
Thank you.
Um, I'll leave it at that. If you have any more questions for me, please let me know.
Thank you so much, we appreciate that.
Before, before we complete our review here, I just wanna point out that if the text below, the, uh, presentation of the small signs, uh, the small signs themselves are seven and a half inches, which I think is about the maximum that you could realistically put on that eave. Sorry, just to reinforce my opinion.
Okay. All right. All right, if we're ready, does somebody wanna make a motion?
I will.
Okay.
At a meeting of the H P B on October nineteenth, twenty twenty-one, uh, I make a motion to approve a submitted, the application made by our neutral ground, neutral ground for the property located at, uh, forty-five Shane Place.
Yes.
Um, no conditions, findings of fact are that the, uh, signs meet the requirements of, of our ordinance as well as the, the variance is granted. Um, and that, uh, they are reversible and do not represent, uh, a negative impact on the resource.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Remember Laura?
Uh, you know, I, I think we ought to read the, the planning and zoning board, uh, or Justin's suggestion.
Well, you can abstain if you don't feel comfortable voting.
So I'll abstain.
Okay, member Paula?
Aye.
Member Sarah?
Aye.
And chairperson Cole? Yes. Motion carries. All right, hey guys, good luck.
Good luck.
Serving you guys some coffee and ice cream. Thank you, we'll be over. Let us know when your grand opening is too, we'll have a party every night. Okay, next applicant, please, forty-two Monroe Avenue for an addition. So, um, I've discussed this, um, or I, I've talked to my board just a bit to make sure that there weren't any questions before night to night. And there was some concern, um, I was on site and looked at this project and it's, it's really bad there. I mean, it's, it's, I don't know where you saw, that you could see it from the street, but I would be, I, I thought it was not even visible from the street. But our building inspector has made the decision that there is some visibility, therefore it falls in our lap. Um, so it needs to have, go through the full approval. So when it goes to the full approval, it needs to go through like anything else, even if it was like sitting on the side of the road. We'd have to take it apart with a fine-tooth comb. So, just like any other application, even though it's very, very, not very visible, we're gonna need everything that we would normally need for an addition. Um, and my understanding from, um, a couple of my board members is that there, that this application is not complete for a number of reasons. Jenny, if you wanna talk about.
Well, uh, on the second page of the application form is a list of what's required for addition and new construction. Uh, you do have an instrument survey map. You, you hit, you do have drawings, uh, to scale and photographs, but the sizes and styles of the windows are not, windows and doors are not shown on the drawing. Nothing indicates new or existing. Uh, materials must be listed on the drawings, they are not. Exterior specifications, this material siding wasn't good with that siding. Um, but not, not things like the handrails, the stairs, the deck material, all those types of things. One we were drawing.
One, the one that we were given in our.
Well, yes. Look at what we are giving.
I know, but this is superseded, and it said before I.
So this drawing we have.
I, I don't know where that came from, because then it might not be the, or the application if I give a planning board application.
Okay, so do we, what, what?
Could I, uh, go in reverse a little bit, just, you guys are the home. And you wanna add an addition on the back of your drawing?
Correct.
Correct. So.
I guess maybe between our neighbor thirty-six Monroe, if you stood on one corner.
I know.
One little spot, four foot square, you can see the back.
Yeah, a little familiar, so you're the starter. And, uh, so. Okay, and then, just when I was looking at the drawing, the pool was put in a few years ago, right?
Correct.
Right, and that came before the board too.
No, it didn't, I don't think it did, no, because you couldn't see.
So now I have an idea.
Yes. So the pool is there and then the garage is actually a little further back. And then the addition is behind the garage. So it's quite a distance from, from the public way. And again, I, I tried to see what you were looking at.
The problem is if you look right now, you can't, I mean, there's nothing to see. But had to initially go back and put a post back.
Right.
And where the, I mean, it's so minimal, what you see, what I fully expected, if you walk around, that, that is constructionally, you can see a springboard off and then these people get called in, I get called in and say, wow, they're not doing.
Yeah, and I understand that, I mean, and that's, that's your decision to make that, that's, that's visible. And that's, that's fine, if that's, we, we, our respect. I know, but since, but since we, we are now called to review this, it's gonna be reviewed just as if we could see the whole full data, because that's the way we've gotta review everything that we were asked to do. So that's why we need specifics per our checklist. And that was just a concern, because what we had was this.
What's my understanding?
Yeah, so, so now we have that.
Nothing.
Was that, when?
Yeah. Like before the snow. In the spring.
Probably won't be.
We'd like it to be done by summer.
So my question for my lawyer, Jeff, because we don't have the actual, the actual application completed, what we have is not correct. Is there something where we're not able to review this application because it was not given to us prior? Or are we able to right now, look at this?
Is this the same thing as copies of it?
No, it's not.
It's different.
No, I'm asking if these pages are copies.
Okay, so we can, you can pull them down so we can see, that'd be great. Just one, just one.
Looking at, looking at this one, you have five inch flat string, having dam. They were sticking off. Give us a minute. Okay, sizes and styles of windows and doors shown on the drawing. This is.
Yeah.
This is. Uh, the door, I'm sorry. This is the existing.
Yeah.
This is new, we don't, we don't have dimensions on this door. Three oh door, three oh sixteen. Just they have a full glass panel?
Yes.
So it's must be the angle, it's looks like a, it's gotta be nine, nine over, nine, nine together, there are nine veins like that.
Yeah, but this is, all, all this is existing.
Oh, that's there, yeah.
Oh, sorry, so here's a window dimension, what about, is this a door?
It's a door.
Three oh sixteen.
It's like a pool.
The balusters are wood.
The material of the railing.
Could be cedar.
Okay.
Um, top rail two by six tapered, bottom rail two by six tapered, two by two balusters.
So it's a stucco, correct?
Stucco building, stucco addition.
And all the details wood. Is there anything that's not wood in detail, is there any?
No.
Fiberglass, any plastic, any, any decking, any tracks, anything like that?
No, we're doing, um, the floor, the decking will be, um, one by six, I think. Mahogany or fake, it'd be natural color. Doors will be natural colors as well.
And the skirt is all wood, ten inch?
Yep.
Ten inch wood.
And it's skirt.
One by six decking.
So.
This Dutch door, same three oh by six eight?
Yep.
These are metal roofs over here.
Metal roof in the back portion. The addition, what, the concept was, this is the existing enclosed room.
Yeah.
The addition should be an enclosed room.
Is this matching asphalt?
Matching, yeah, it's a granite matter roof.
These two here.
Yep.
And where's the metal?
The metal would be.
Just this part.
Just to break it up and make it so.
I'm, I'm concerned about the connection between the metal roof and the asphalt shingles. That, that to me seems like a very difficult
Problem.
Uh, construction wise, to make watertight, what are?
What's your concern? This is. They're married all the time.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I've seen lots of buildings with metal roofs where the connections are a typical point of failure.
Okay.
So I'm concerned, uh, how are you, how are you going to treat this valley?
You know, the valley.
Okay.
And it'll be metal, obviously.
Well, if it's an open, it, for those of you who don't know, an open valley means that the, the flashing that goes in the valley extends beyond and is exposed.
Yes.
So, um, this, um,
That side and the other side.
And, no, on this side and on, on this side, on the shingle and the metal side, there would be exposed flashing and the roofing comes over it, so there.
Can I just ask you, because when I was visiting the site, I'm sorry, your first name again, Nicole, I just know that.
I'm introducing myself.
So Nicole had shown me where you put the little pole we were talking about. So where on this drawing is the end of that pole? Like where does that pole go? You know what I mean? Is it go, is it pole, it's, it's not all the way back here, is it here?
It's way back here.
Oh, really?
And what is?
So.
You're calling it a pole, what is this?
So. He put some, some poles in there so I could, so when you see the site, you can see how far back this goes?
Yeah.
But this, this circle represents the, I'm sorry, the downside.
Yeah, that, yeah, I'm just talking about, this is the pose, I just wanted to kinda get a visual, okay?
So we've got the sizes of the windows and doors, no one existing is shown, materials are on the drawings. Uh, what about lighting, I'm seeing lights.
Only one light, right there, go away the door.
Okay.
Uh, do you have a cut sheet for that or anything?
We do now, we haven't selected one yet.
Okay. Okay. Well, I'm, I'm trying to be a stickler.
That's fine.
Today about whatever. If we approve something that we don't know what it's really gonna be, then that puts us in a, in a compromising position in the future.
So what you're saying is the light, you should have had a cut sheet on that. They should have picked it.
Yeah, you can't see the light anywhere.
Well, these look, these drawings look great. Thank you.
Okay, so we're gonna, I've written on this one. The door sizes are.
Okay.
So this needs to include that with our.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you guys. All right.
Let's, let's try to see. This looks like twenty-four by thirty-six.
Okay, so, um, I'm gonna start. Jenny, do you have any questions or comments for the applicant or the?
I don't accept to say hi to Nikki.
Oh, my gosh, I didn't know.
You know who I am? She, good, she grew up right on, right up. Her brother and my son were best buddies.
Oh, my gosh, that's great.
Uh, first wave.
Okay. Um, Jeff, any comments? And what do you think?
Uh, you know, it's, with the time I had to look at it, it looks very nice.
All right, well, I'm gonna make a motion. Um, I make a motion to approve the addition as submitted with the new blueprint. Do I have a second?
A second. Remember Paula?
Yes.
Remember Earl?
Yes.
Yes. Awesome. We look forward to it. We're gonna have a party, boy.
Why don't we?
You just had that one.
I don't really, the, you know, it's always been interesting to be.
This is gonna be different or is it gonna be, uh, uh, this is not stuff. That's it.
That was great. Then they, uh.
Not with.
They, they've got a, a asphalt course in front of the ground.
Oh, yeah, there you go.
And that looks like a wood with stock on it. They put stock on it.
Good luck, you guys. Look forward to seeing it. Awesome job. Thank you. Thank you for those wonderful drawings. We're really happy with that. Thank you. Okay, so we're gonna have our next applicant. Yeah. Forty, oh no.
Seventy-two. Okay, so there's Ms. Hookway, she's on virtually.
Okay.
You're right.
All right, Ms. Hookway, you can unmute.
Good evening.
All right, so you are here to, oh, yes, Shannon, you were here already. Okay.
Yeah, we spoke last.
Yeah, so refresh our memory, Shannon, as to, um, what had happened when you presented this last time and why you're back again.
So last time was really just informational, cuz we were waiting for the zoning and planning to make the approval. So you, you guys provided me with some good information that we applied. And I, everything was approved yesterday with zoning and planning, so here I am.
I'm gonna start this off by saying the same issue with these drawings. I do not, it's my opinion that these drawings are not complete and that we should not review the certification.
So Jenny, can you be a little more specific as to what is missing on this drawing?
Okay, I'm gonna go through the same, the same list of what's required, and this is on page two of the location form. So there is an instrument survey map. The drawings are to scale or photographs. The sizes and styles of the windows and doors are not shown on the drawing.
I, can you, you're a little, I can't hear you quite well, but everything should be of.
What, what I, I went through the list of items that are required by our application forms. There is an instrument survey map. The drawings of the addition, all elevations are to scale. There, there are no, you don't need any photographs of effective elevations because this is a detached garage.
Can you go?
The sizes and styles of the windows and doors must be shown on the drawings. They are not.
Um, you might have, what version do you have of this? Because they should all be there.
Does it, we have an A two, A three?
You have A one. It's all shown on A one. I, I'm, I'm looking at it. It was provided in the past. I also provided an updated file.
Okay, Shannon, hold on. Let us take a look.
Is Steve in the room?
Yeah.
Yeah. That's why we already had all the materials. Did she put the siding listed on there or?
Everything was listed.
Well, the, the sizes are not, there's a window schedule.
Um, are you able to unmute David Burrows, who is my architect? He can walk you through, like, what?
Oh, I, I know what I'm looking at.
We, yeah, we just need to make sure that it's in the application.
There is a window.
What's that?
We can certainly unmute the.
Yeah, but we're just, let's just see if we can, we're just looking for the information that needs to be.
Mr. Burrows, are you seventy-two State Street?
Yes, I'm here. Thank you.
There is a window schedule on sheet A one.
Yes, I'll, I'll tell you the sizes. I, A, schedule.
I can read what they are, Mr. Burrows. My, my problem with that is that the windows on the elevations are not identified, so we do not know which windows are.
Um, they, yes, they are on the floor plan.
They're labeled A, B, C, D.
A, B, and C.
Well, the old A, B, and C trick here.
Standard architectural nomenclature.
Well, typically, I would put them also on the elevation sheet, David. I am an O.
Right, but they are here. They are present.
They are here.
It's smaller, can't read them. So Shannon, um, is there anything that, that you did differently than what we had talked about last time you were here? Did you guys, cuz it doesn't look like, I can't see anything that looks different than when we were first talking. Did you do anything different on this drawing than what we talked about at the last presentation for information only?
I think the width was a question before, and then there was two different discussions on the width of the garage.
Yes.
And then eighteen feet.
Okay, so they took it down. Okay.
And I might add that the siding on the upper part now matches the siding below. There is a, an option to have a different siding above. We've eliminated that option.
Okay. Thank you for that. I remember that.
And also, I think you mentioned, you also received type plan approval and the various sort of.
Yeah, yeah. Do you have any questions? Do you need to see this? I'll let you look. Jeff, any questions?
Nope.
I don't have any questions, Jenny. Do you wanna look a little bit longer?
Now, now that I've been, um, corrected on the window dimensions.
Okay. Have you have any questions?
No.
Jenny? Okay, I'm gonna make a motion. I have a meeting at HPP on October nineteen. The following motion was made. I make a motion that the HPP approve is submitted the application for a, a new garage made by Shannon Hookway. Capital location of. Seventy-two State Street. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Remember Moore?
Yes.
Remember Earl? Remember Paula?
Hi.
Turner, Turner.
Yes.
Looking here.
Thanks, Shannon. It's gonna look amazing. Thank you, guys, for being patient with us, and we appreciate it.
Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, you're all set. Bye-bye. Okay, Shane Place, oil tank surround. Yay, you've been waiting patiently for us. Are you gonna have a party for us after this, too?
Absolutely. Clean, safe oil.
All right, there we go.
All right.
Yeah, all right.
So we have a, for health and safety for employees, uh, we have found a system that's been around for over twenty years. It's a containment system, um, in which the, everything is, uh, quick connect, pressurized. Truck comes in, connects to a tank, basically the size like a water heater, um, fills it with fresh oil, food break, and then it has another one that takes out the dirty oil. It's all contained within that one box. Uh, so the truck pulls up, connects, drives away. There's no carrying oil around the property, which we currently do. There's no possible spillage, um, contaminant to the ground or anything like that. It's then a six-inch hose goes from the box, which has two tanks, up into a six-inch hole through the back of the building to another quick connect inside.
Are the tanks there now?
No, they're not.
Okay, so these, the tanks are new. Right, so the tanks are new.
Yeah.
And that was proved through, not us, right? The tanks, we don't, they had, do they had to go through zoning or anything to have those oil tanks put in?
They're, the tanks do have a seater, it holds them.
Right, I know, but I'm, I'm not talking about, I'm just saying, do those have to be approved by anybody to have oil, new oil tanks put there? No.
It's no different than, yeah.
Okay.
It's actually, it's clean and safe. Right, currently, like, right now, we have a big open plastic tub.
Okay.
That the property community uses for waste oil, um, which animals can get in. It's still on the ground.
So this surround, is this specifically designed?
Contained in a box.
So it's, okay.
Yeah, so what you're looking at is a, it's a six by six by four box. It's a metal box. It's all sealed. We can't even get into it when we know oil company can to maintain it or if they had to repair it. Like you say, there's a eight-inch box open. They hook up two hoses, one with fresh, one with dirty, and it goes away.
All right. Let me ask you this.
Yeah.
If you, if we were to ask you to put some wood, like, what's all on both sides of this?
So it is paintable. We were gonna paint it to blend in with the building.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the painted version, kind of. Yeah.
But the material, but the actual material is metal?
It's metal, yeah.
It's all metal?
Yeah.
Okay.
And the specification on the box should be in the packet. Um, and it would be right next to the one unit that you see the lattice.
Yeah.
That's hiding the addition unit. It would blend right in next to that.
No, I didn't get the colored canopy here.
You got one.
No, I can see it. I don't, I don't, yeah, but I can hope.
Yep, there we go.
Okay. Can you? How close to the building is this gonna be and?
It will be eight inches off the back of the building. Just enough for the tube to come out of the back.
Okay.
Run along the building and then in.
This is not gonna be set high. I recognize that this is Photoshop.
We, that came from the company, you know, we asked them, hey, we need a picture for you guys.
It, it, when we flush the building, it's all five inches back from that lattice.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Porch overhang.
So it's like, kind of tucked in.
I, I believe, I believe the applicant just stated that it would not be flushed to the building. It'll be about stamp.
Six inches. Yeah, five, yeah, five, six inches. Enough for the tubing to come out the back, um, and then into the building.
No, I think what Steve meant, Jenny, is that it's gonna be set in between those two lattices, so it's gonna be set back a little bit.
Yeah, this looks like it's pulled out.
This looks like it's pulled out, but it's actually gonna set in between them. Okay.
Can you paint the black stuff?
What's that? That was just the outline that shows the box. I believe they did, you know.
The more it can disappear, the better.
Yes, oh, it will, like, the whole thing, I think the reason they put the black to show you that it just wasn't as red as they put on Photoshop did.
Didn't work like.
There is oil business, not the Photoshop business, thank God. What's that?
They don't do this.
No, they don't.
Jeff, do you have any questions for the applicant?
Well, you were talking about a lattice.
It's not gonna look like this.
No.
But the more I think about it, I mean, if, if, if he painted to go away, I'm not, I'm not.
I'm all right with it.
Yeah.
If it's painted.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah.
All right.
This, this kind of side, this is becoming the industry standard now for oil.
Oh, we didn't know that.
Yeah.
If this works well, the establishments down there may go insane, but it's actually dangerous for the, the workers to carry pot, grease, and oil to a truck.
Oh, yeah.
And the tracks are one of the most disgusting things that hurts.
Sure, sure.
Well, additionally, any stuff that falls out of there is just food for the rats.
Yeah.
For sure, a real feast.
We try not to let anything hit the, the ground.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for the applicant?
Nope.
No.
So what, is this like dry oil?
Yeah, 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 it's a food blade cooking oil.
Okay, so I make a motion, HPP, um, they say October, what did I say, nineteen? Um, to, um, approve as submitted the application for a oil enclosure.
Enclosure.
Containment system. Made by, yes, Steve.
Or you're, um, thanks to make sure that it's referenced, changes.
Yeah. Okay, well, it is in there. It's, it's, it's already in the application. You did put it in there as needed, okay? Um, for a oil containment system made by, all right, how do you see your name?
I'm Greg Olson. I'm the director of operations.
All right.
For Pierce, the owner.
All right, Pierce, all right, Pier.
Perot.
Perot. It's simply Crepes. Uh, property of Seven Shane Place. Do I have a second?
Second.
Remember Moore?
Yes.
Remember Earl?
Yes.
Remember Paula?
Yes.
And Turner's and Co.
Yes, right. Thank you so much. You're awesome. And that was worth the wait, right? That was worth the wait. You were the shortest and easiest. Okay.
I'll find a second.
Okay, so we have one more person who's here, just here for information only. Again, second time, right? All right, come on up. So this is the addition that you wanna add to your kitchen. This is the application we were talking about, the fireplace you say has deteriorated, and you wanna take it out.
The chimney, yeah.
Chimney. Let me ask you just a quick question. Jenny asked me this. Are you guys planning on taking the inside fireplace out? Or are you gonna leave it, like, it's side inside?
We're gonna leave the fireplace beside it side.
Okay.
Are you gonna put in gas logs or something like that? What's gonna, here's my question. You saw the house. The chimney is gone, but let me tell you what, some people are not gonna pay attention to that, and somebody's gonna try, it's my fear that someone will try to build a fire in their fireplace when there's no place for the smoke.
That could happen now.
Pardon me?
That could happen now, the chimney there. It could build a fire in the fireplace and burn the house down. So, we don't know what we're doing because if you put gas logs in there, there are venting issues with that.
Yeah, yeah.
And the, so the architect was working with the drawing you have, under the assumption the fireplace wouldn't be, or the chimney wouldn't.
The chimney.
See the outline of it here.
Right.
Yeah, he's got it outlined where it used to be.
Yeah.
Or currently is. We haven't decided what we're gonna do or what's gonna be cost-effective. Um, we like having the hearth inside the house. We like the look of it.
No, I totally get that part.
Yeah.
And you're, you're gonna know not to go to fire.
Right.
Right, okay.
But my concern is unsuspecting, uh, next only.
Right. Well, it would certainly be included on property disclosure.
Okay, right.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, so this, this drawing, um, is without the removal of that chimney.
It's with the removal of it.
Right?
Yes, because he just moved the addition out partway where the chimney. And clearly, the major design thing here is the removal of the gable.
Right. Removing this.
Yes, that gable.
A lot cleaner.
It would look a lot cleaner, yeah.
Um, it does reduce the mass, the visual mass of it, because the gable is, there's Um, it does reduce the mass, the visual mass of it, because the gable is, there's nothing up there.
Yeah.
It's useless space, the roof then would be somewhat matching the roof on the other side of the porch, and would clean that whole roof line up, is what he said.
So I'm not an architect, but I've been hanging around with Jenny a long time, Jenny, what do you, are you concerned with this right here? That, where that in half?
No.
Okay.
Yep.
There you go. That was easy.
We need to.
Yeah, okay.
Pretty standard connections.
Looks like trouble to me, but.
Let me ask a question. Is this?
My coffee stain, no, let me show you my coffee stain, he calls it a
where?
It's a covered stoop, so the door remains the same, so it's, it's deceiving here, this is open space to the new wall. And then the column comes over what he's calling a covered stoop here with the.
Okay.
Let's move over. The door stays the same.
These, these things, the same.
The window will be pushed out.
It would get moved forward.
The one that's in the bathroom now, is this one?
Yeah.
It's the same exact replacement, everything, windows same?
Same ones, police though.
Are you using the same window?
We would like to, I mean, there's nothing wrong with it.
Okay, if you decide that you're gonna change that window.
Oh, yeah.
We need to let us know that, you're taking that window out, just moving forward.
Actually, to be fair, we might change the window because it's a smaller, shorter window to match the length of the two windows on the right. I think visually, but it depends on.
Well, that's a, that's a bathroom.
It is a bathroom window.
Yeah.
You don't, typically, a bathroom window with little.
Yeah, it is small, yeah. But if you do decide, you're gonna need to come back to us, okay?
May, may I make a comment?
Yes. That's over here.
I, I recognize, now that I see the plan view, I understand this better, the line weights are all pretty much the same, so it makes it hard.
It does.
To determine depth here. This is a column at this little stoop here. And I guess, and, and this is a corner board.
Yes.
And this is the beam that's going to support the roof load across this space. I guess I feel this is a little awkward, this, the corner board, the, the post is nice and nicely detailed, and it looks great to me. What I, what I'm kind of having a difficult time with is that this.
This is a corresponding beam with her.
Yeah, just. It feels unbalanced to me, to have, to have.
Would you like to see like a faux column put on that corner board then to match?
Maybe a, maybe a pilaster type so that, so that it's the same.
Yeah.
Pilaster.
Yeah.
It sounds, yeah, so it frames the door.
Yes.
Yes.
So that the appearance of this.
Yes, looks like an entrance.
Well, it just, it, it balances.
Yeah.
Frames it better.
This is bulky, this is thin.
Yeah, I agree.
So that's cosmetic.
It's just cosmetics.
Yeah.
That's my, that's my only comment, otherwise it looks fine to me.
Yeah.
Okay.
Looks good, you guys.
We will go back to him and he will give you much more detail.
Yeah, yeah, just make sure that the checklist is checked off, so you got everything included. Okay, yes, you guys got there from tonight's meeting. Okay, good, all right.
We will do two separate applications for next time, one to move the door that we talked about first time in the porch, and then this addition will be separate.
Why?
Uh, because if there's something on this one you don't like, we don't wanna be held up with moving the door.
Whatever you. I mean.
Side in the middle of the meeting, we don't wanna vote on one part.
Well, you're gonna bring both of them to the meeting.
We're gonna bring both of them to the meeting, but we would like to act it on separately, that's okay. So, what's the board?
Well, they're, they're going to remove, so, kind of a suggestion or comment, what's our opinion on the removal of the chimney?
I'm all right with it.
And you know what, I went to the house today, I'm walking to everybody's houses, sorry, you guys.
And you walk that almost every day.
I know, I do walk by every day, but I walk up your driveway, the chimney is really not visible from, the only visible is if, you know, just a little bit of it.
Yeah.
From the back of the roof, but other than that, it's not even the start of the house, you've gotta walk around the backyard to see that chimney.
Yeah.
We did look.
We did, we did research, yeah.
So two.
Yay, oh, good deal.
One, the chimney does not have a distinct design element to the house, the chimney is probably not original to the house, if you look at the design elements for that type of house, the chimney should have been off the side gable.
And it's not.
And it's not, and if you look at the foundation, it's been dug out like it had actually been moved.
Oh.
And that would support the fact that the chimney is settling separate from the foundation, which is why it's falling back.
But it's not. Well, thank you for doing your homework.
Yeah, wow, that's impressive.
I think that part of the house is nineteen oh five.
Um, it shows up on the eighteen seventy-two flat map.
Which part of the house?
The part that has.
The original.
But not the.
But it's not clear the chimney was originally there.
Right.
Because of that style of house, the chimney should have been on the center with the gable edges.
Well, just so you know, just for future as well, I mean, I appreciate that you guys had looked at that architecturally, we also, we are an architecturally preservation, so we also look at preservation, so we try not to change what's been there, so that's the only other piece, just so you know for your own.
Yeah.
Well, I think if you had put the chimney or the gable, there wouldn't be any room for the drive.
I don't think the driveway was there.
Yeah, because it wasn't originally, it was a servant house, wasn't it?
Essentially, so. Yes, it was a tenant house for the, the Hardest family, and it looks like before Rand Place was even there, the Hardest family owned most of the south side of Locust Street. So that's why the house sits so far towards the street is because all the back end was farm.
Right, right.